I call to order the City of Bulton's Planning Commission for Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Commissioner Reese, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure thing.
Roll call.
Commissioner De Fazio.
Present.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkei.
Here.
Vice Chair Mercado.
Here.
Chair Hamel.
Here. Reordering of the agenda, do we have some tonight?
Um, yes, I'm going to ask that the agenda be reordered uh with the second, excuse me, the third item under new public hearings uh being put before the second as I have to recuse myself due to proximity.
Okay, good, we will do that, so number two becomes number three, number three becomes number two. Presentations, I don't believe there are any approval of the minutes from our last meeting, August third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting on August third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comments, I skipped this one last time accidentally. So, public comments, this is members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission on matters that are not on the agenda tonight, so not items two or three on the back, but anything else um may do so at this time, no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Um, and comments are usually limited to three minutes, is there anyone who hasn't filled out a speaker slip that wishes to comment on anything not on the agenda? I see, no.
I don't see any.
And there's nothing online, is there? No one online, okay, consent calendar none, continued public hearings none. So now we go to item two, formerly item three. Resolution number twenty-three dash zero seven, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Bulton, California, recommending city council approval of an ordinance amending municipal code title nineteen zoning relating to providing for certification of review of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for immediate city council consideration and making findings in support thereof, Planning Director Kiefer.
Good evening Chair Hamel and members of the Planning Commission. The Bulton Municipal Code governs the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission um and the city council as it pertains to discretionary planning applications. The existing Bulton Municipal Code provides that Planning Commission must first hear a discretionary planning application before it may be reviewed by the city council. The code also provides for an appeal process to the city council, which is separate from what we would be considering tonight. Um, occasionally, there may be certain discretionary actions that are currently codified as being under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission that instead require that the city council take action and or take jurisdiction over the matter. So I just want to take a moment to here to just state and emphasize really that the intent of this proposed um ordinance would be um the exception, not the rule, and it's meant to be used on occasion and only under those circumstances that they are, that it would be warranted to be um used for, so um just to kind of further that point, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment would modern- modernize the Bulton Municipal Code by providing a process known as the certification of review uh to place such discretionary actions immediately under the jurisdiction of the city council. So, again, I just want to point out that the intent of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is not to limit the the authority of the Planning Commission in making decisions on planning applications, but it's rather to streamline the review of certain projects that as a matter of city policy and planning should be reviewed by the city council. So, under the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, uh the certification of review process could be initiated by the city manager, the city attorney, or any member of the city council. The filer would be required to provide a statement requesting a certification of review, and the request could be filed at any point either before or after decision-making body took action on the project and up until one day before the appeal period ends. So, um, the instances where this process would be um utilized, it's it's really difficult to kind of pinpoint exact the exact scenario because each project and situation is unique and has different implications for the city as a whole, um however, again, the intent is um to only utilize the process under very specific and limited circumstances for, as I quote in my staff report, that are of great citywide significance. Um, and it is meant to be applied in situation where there there's a matter that is outside of the discretion of the Planning Commission. Um, but at but as currently in codified in our code, there is no other mechanism in the city's municipal code to allow the city council to take jurisdiction over the matter. So, um with that, uh, staff recommends that Planning Commission consider adoption of twenty-three oh seven, which is recommending city council approval of an ordinance amending title nineteen of the municipal code, providing for certification of review for certain discretionary land use planning proposals. Uh, that concludes my report, and I am certainly available for any questions um that this item that the Planning Commission might have on this item.
Okay, thank you, um, would, uh, just full disclosure on, uh, Planning Director Kiefer and I had a a few discussions yesterday and walked through some uh hypothetical scenarios on how this would work for timing and who and when and all that kind of stuff, um, do you want to get into one of those, or should we just go through questions?
Maybe we can go through some questions, and it might elicit some thought on some hypothetical, you know, scenarios, which I'm happy to provide, um, obviously noting that they're they're hypothetical and and each situation's going to be unique, but um certainly available for questions.
Helped me very much because I, as we were discussing then, your thinking and your talking out loud and, okay, now I understand that part. So, Commissioner Reese, let's start with you with questions.
Sure.
Um, my first point was that examples would be helpful.
Yes, yes, I figured that there would be questions and and the need for examples, but I just wanted to give the Planning Commission first a an opportunity for questions, and then I can certainly go into a hypothetical example.
Sure, I think in general, without context, I'm in favor of the count or, you know, one of the parties that's able to do initiate this action, being able to do it during the appeal period.
Mm-hmm.
I think it just first impression is that there is some potential for abuse before in action is taken or recommendations made.
So, um, I certainly, um, you know, understand your position there, um, there is, so there is a provision in the draft ordinance that basically that's titled recusal, so essentially, um, that may partially address what your concern is, but basically what that section um indicates is that if a particular decision maker on the city council, if it's a city council member, is required to recuse themselves from an item due to proximity or any other conflict reason, they would be unable to initiate the certification of review on that project, and further, they would also be not be allowed to participate um, just as they would not be able to under any circumstances um in the item being brought forward to the council, so they couldn't they could not bring it up for review if they were or if they're required to recuse themselves, and they could not participate in the meeting or hearing on the item if it is brought up for a review. So I don't know if that addresses part of what your concern is, but um.
That's helpful. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Romano De Fazio.
Um, I actually do have a kind of a basic question.
Sure.
Why, I guess, would be my question, how this, anything that seems to take away the opportunity for um the democratic process, which to me, that, yeah, is it small potatoes comparatively, sure, but it it just seems a little odd, so I'm wondering why.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, so I can give a little um description of the why, and it might lead into a hypothetical scenario here, but um um, so it, again, it's not really meant to take away the 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 decision-making authority that is granted to the Planning Commission, in fact, you know, the city council often relies upon recommendations or decisions by the Planning Commission for certain land use projects or decisions um as such, um, this certification of review process is really meant for those very unique circumstances um in which there is something about an individual project that um is is actually actually requires or necessitates city council, um it's within the city council's purview or discretion, and it's a kind of goes outside of what the Planning Commission's role would typically be, right? So, the Planning Commission has their role in in, you know, um, in providing recommendations to council or making decisions on certain discretionary land use decisions. Um, but there are certain instances that, again, it's really hard to come up with um specific situations, I will go into a hypothetical here um tonight, just to kind of give you a sense. So, an example would be, and this is totally hypothetical, um, let's say, um, the city council really wants a hospital to come to the city, right? And there's a piece of property, the property is landlocked, so that would necessitate, meaning that there's no access, direct access um to get to this property in order to accommodate a project. Um, and therefore, there is, uh, you know, an access easement or property that needs to be utilized to accommodate that access. Um, so, and in in this hypothetical scenario, let's say that the property owner of that property that that they would need to, you know, have um use some of their property to gain access is unwilling to grant an easement or property to provide that access, um, this, the Planning Commission does not have the authority to um require things like eminent domain or and those types of things, and so in that this hypothetical scenario, say the city really wants a hospital, and that's the only way that they're going to get this hospital in this this great location that seems to serve the public interest, but they're unable, but the Planning Commission, that is outside, that component of the project is outside of the purview of the Planning Commission, in that example, any of the seven, I guess, um, people that are listed in the certification of review process could call um that project for review up to the city council, either to review the project as a whole or to review the component, i.e. the eminent domain, or, you know, taking of the property of that particular um of that particular component of the project. Now, again, it's going to depend project specific, so in some, so so in that scenario, it could be, and this is just hypothetical, that the council takes acc- action on the eminent domain component and then sends it back down to the Planning Commission, or there might be something else about the project that is outside of the Planning Commission's um just or jurisdiction like the eminent domain, I can't think of anything on the top of my head at this point, but that would necess- would necessitate that the whole project be heard immediately by the council, so you know, i- it's those types of things that are um that that, you know.
I I, if I may.
Sure.
I I understand where you're going with that, um, my question is, one, what mechanism is there for this to deal with that particular type of issue now? Two, why did it come before, it's it's, I'm still not getting the why.
There is.
Exactly.
So there is no mechanism um other than our appeal process.
Okay, so there exists
So.
An appeal and and the way the appeal process works, maybe you could go just a quick snippet into how.
So, the appeal process is obviously separate from this, and it has to do with, you know, an aggrieved party or person, I don't know the exact language, but that process is different than this because it's dealing with an aggrieved person, and it's not typically the city manager, the city attorney, or the city council members, right? It's usually a private property owner or a private citizen or things like that, um, and so, a- and and that appeal process is, you know, again, for an aggrieved party. In this instance, it's it's the either the city manager, city attorney, or council members that there that in their judgment, there is something that is of such citywide significance that is not necessarily something that is related to the an aggrieved party necessarily, it's more related to something that is citywide policy related, that is, that that the the council or the city attorney or the city manager feel that um that that needs to be heard by them, so.
So would that would the this, if this were to be passed, would that fast-track a project if there was no one outside of the other members of city council that objected to it?
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding.
Well, I I'm saying, if this were to pass, and it wasn't brought before um the Planning Commission, what would that achieve in effect, that someone could fast-track a a proposal or a project? I I'm not sure why, why the, why it would. I don't know, I'm I'm kind of still lost without having
Um.
More specific, concrete examples that make sense other than, you know, I get the eminent domain, but.
Yeah, so again, it's it's so hard to think of, and again, I I will just preface this with this is, I mean, I've spoken to people that have been in the field um for decades, and in their careers, it's come up total, in total, two to three times, so this is not a process that is meant to be utilized on a regular basis, or not even on a semi, I mean, it's meant for those very, very unique circumstances that are really hard to pinpoint exactly what they would look like, but um but again, just i- it's meant so that um, that I guess I could go into a bit further of another example that maybe will.
That might help, just because, I'm trying to think, what would be the the option?
Okay.
Be the worst-case scenario if it didn't pass.
So, okay, so let me hope, maybe this will.
Yeah, that might.
Um, so, another, it's another eminent domain example, but it's it's different context, so let's say that a developer is proposing a project that in order to mitigate impacts for their project, they're required to do certain roadway improvements or whatever, you know, types of improvements to the roadway that would require changes to our circulation system, would require potentially, had again hypothetically, eminent domain of private property in order to accommodate those improvements, um, um, the 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 so, the Planning Commission, in theory, right, absent the eminent domain issue, if the project is, if the the typical process for the project is only to go to Planning Commission, and that, you know, that there's right first, right, right?
Okay.
Um, um, but there's this issue with potentially require, as a condition of approval for the project that that we're looking at and going, okay, well, in order to mitigate these impacts, there's the potential for the requirement for eminent domain on another private property, well, in that case, while the commissions, i- it, the project itself is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, the imposition of a condition of approval, i.e., in theory, you know, eminent domain of a private property in order to accommodate improvements that we would be conditioning the developer to do to accommodate that project, um, that is outside of the purview, the Planning Commission does not have the discretion to to condition a project, um um, to require that without.
Of eminent, I mean, right.
Correct, so I'm just using that as like, that's, so, um, so, in that case, you know, some as part of the certification of review process, again, any of the seven members that can do that, they could say, you know what, um, in order, you know, we need to deal with this either the project as a whole or the eminent domain piece before the Planning Commission can act on the application, they could call for review the project in that limited scope, or they could call for, you know. They could call for review the project in that limited scope, or they could call for, you know, that's the point is that there's.
So it can't be limited then, so they, it could be the whole scope of.
It could, it could be, it just depends on the scenario, right, and I'm just trying to give some hypotheticals, but um, but um. You know, the idea is that, you know, because I guess to get, take it a step further, right? So let's just as a hypothetical here, let's say as the code, you know, as the process currently exists, so let's say that, you know, there's a project, it required certain improvements and it became to light that those would require, you know, eminent domain, again, as the example. So let's say the planning commission approved the project and, you know, there was no appeals or whatever. Then, then the developer goes to build the project and then we're going and saying, okay, you know, you need to satisfy all of your conditions of approval. And we get to the condition where, oh, you're required to do X, Y, and Z improvements. It it, we would, what's that?
It's a police powers issue.
Correct, so i- if they were to then say, well, we we can't do those improvements without the private property and the city was unwilling to exercise police powers of eminent domain, then we would then not be able to require compliance with that condition of approval. And then those those impacts would not be mitigated because we would either have to choose. Okay, we're going to initiate eminent domain or we're just going to tell them that they don't have to comply with those conditions because those are the options that we would have. So then we would be left with impacts associated with that project because we were, we would be unable to impose those conditions, if that makes sense.
It makes sense, I can think of a project where there was a potential condition for eminent domain. And also an option to elevate it to council. Yeah, I mean.
I hope, I mean, I I'm trying, yeah.
Is there another example shy of eminent domain? More sense for us.
So, I mean, I guess if you're remembering, so we had a nice.
So, so the the recommendation is a very broad brush approach, you know, it's the the verbiage is matters of great citywide significance. So let's say, let's change it out of eminent domain and talk about, maybe it's a major traffic or circulation issue. And say, you know, and it and it could happen that it's already correct me if I'm wrong, the project is already in place and maybe we've reviewed it once or twice, but it hasn't come up for public hearing. But so when it comes up for public hearing and there's this significant issue still, that's when one of those seven people could apply for that certification of review. It would actually be pulled from us and go directly to city council and that would be the, the if they approved it or denied it, that's your final answer.
Yeah, and so, and I know, you know, Commissioner Hamel and I had a conversation about the timing component of the ordinance yesterday and there was some question about, so why at any point, you know, why is it worded that at any point from, you know, basically applications to middle all the way till one day prior to the end of the appeal period? And really, the the idea is that, you know, because when we, you know, let's say the planning commission hears, has a public hearing on a project and something from public comment or that was considered at the public hearing came up or came to light, we would like to give the opportunity for any of the seven that can have the authority to do so, to pull it with the understanding, again, that it's not meant, it's meant for very specific instances that there is something that is of such, again, great wide city wide significance. And it's meant to be broad brush because we just really don't know what would come through on that, we just know that, you know. You know, we're just trying to establish a process within our code that in those very specific instances, you know, they, those, and again, I just want to point out too that any of the, anybody who calls a, any of the seven that would call for review, certification of review, any project in order for it to get agendized, of course, the city manager, city attorney and any of the council members that they are the one, one of the council members calling it for review, will be having, you know, a discussion. And again, they have to file the request, there has to be a legit reason and that legit, that that reason, that documentation will be provided and will be discussed before it is even agendized.
Right, and then if that person was a city council member, that person would also have to recuse. Because they brought forward.
They would have to recuse if.
Yes, so if, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not if they brought it forward, I I apologize. Not if they brought it forward, if they were required to recuse themselves from the project from the get-go because of some of some conflict, i.e. radius or other, other interests. But if if a council member calls it for review and they're not required to recuse themselves, they can participate in the, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so was this a recommendation by the city attorney for some reason?
No, I think, I think it was just.
The timing seemed a little. Just try to really get insight into.
Yeah, no, I think, again, I think, and and it's not uncommon for cities to have this, we just don't have it existing in our code. I do know that other codes have it, I mean, not, not every city by any means, it's not, you know. But it just came up as a matter that was wanting to be, needing to be, you know, wanting to be considered by the city council. And so that is what we are bringing forward to the planning commission for a recommendation, so.
Anything else for now?
I had the same question you had because the way I read D, part D and exhibit A didn't imply that the member who brought it forward.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sarkia, questions for Planning Director Kiefer?
So this situation has occurred in other cities and it may occur in our city. So it gives our council more flexibility and to work with it.
Yeah, it just, it, you know, allows us a mechanism separate from the appeal process to to call these projects or call these components of projects up for review in very specific, unique circumstances, so yes.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Mercado.
I have a lot of questions. I agree with so far with our other planning commissioners have said, the why, I see the abuse. I probably the biggest question I have is the seven, why does the city council or the city manager and the city attorney have that option? Because as I see, it should be just the council and as as, I see it having sat on both sides, think of one of only few here. I think in the four years that we've only had two appeals. And it went through a very simple process and it all worked out at the end. And so I, like everybody else, has the same questions, why, why and where's it coming from? Because like you said, we really don't know. And so, for those instances that you brought up, I I think the appeal process is there in place. It doesn't have to be in a grievance party, anybody can send an appeal if they propose to pay for it. So everybody has an opportunity to appeal.
Yeah, so I think, I think just to answer your first question, why the city manager and city attorney would have the authority? And I think that speaks to the legal side of things, right? So something that may not be apparent to a council member or a community member that is something that is actually lawfully under the discretion of the city council. That's why we have the city county, the city attorney and the city manager as a party to that. So that if there is some issue that is brought up, again, that is, should be heard by the city council because it's a matter of policy or legally, the council is the only authority to vote on a particular component of a project. That's why those two, the city manager and city attorney are included in that. They're also include, well, in terms of bringing it up for review. And then again, even i- if it was a council member that that requested to bring it up for review, they would be coordinating with the city manager and city attorney as sort of a safeguard, I guess, to make sure that the, that that the city attorney and city manager understand why the request is made and to make sure that it is in line with the, you know, intent of the ordinance in the first place. So anything that gets, any request that gets brought up by a council member, any of the seven would then again be reviewed and scrutinized before it would be even agendized on the council.
Right, but that's, to me, the validity is why we were have the city attorney on retainer, correct?
Yes, but in terms, certain, yeah, so in certain circumstances, but.
So I, I, like I said, I think it takes away from a separation of powers. Because I think the process, I I think there's just more people who would come to a planning commission meeting sometimes to voice an opinion whether pro, con, whatever. And till that goes through to the council, you wouldn't see as many people be willing to come forward. I I just, I just have a, a lot of concerns on on that. And I understand the five council members and but what I, I think the biggest issues I have is that it takes away a separation of powers. I think the plant commission has a certain role and it's worked. Like you said, there's a lot of towns and and even if we go back and then and review what happened in our, our California cities, very few instances were brought up and they made it a point to say, there are very few issues that come before the planning commission that can't be appealed to the council as a whole. And so we just take away a layer of that openness to the city. So those are some of my concerns for, for right now.
Okay, thank you. So I really don't have any further questions. We kind of walked through the scenarios, timing and who and when and the accusations, how that works. I'll save all Mike, I have many comments, but I'll save them till the end. This is a public hearing and so I would like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone that wishes to speak about this in the public tonight? Okay, and okay, you have to come up to the mic and say who you are.
That's the best part of this whole thing, you get to come and.
Now we know who you are.
I'm Lori Youngman. My problem is recusing. Forcing a member to recuse because they're in proximity to an issue, who's going to fight for you if that person can't fight for you? So I have a real issue with this, oh, I have to recuse myself because that's in my district or that's in my area. I think that that person should be able to fight for us or the people in this district or her district. So that's my issue with recusing. I think it's unfair to the people in the district or the whoever it is you represent.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name.
Nancy Dorwin, and I would agree with Commissioner Mercado as well as Defazio.
It's a long, it's a long name.
If it's not broken, you don't need to fix it. And my feeling is, is that if the planning commission has operated with an appeals process which is noticed, which is then heard and you have a, an open hearing and there's just no shade thrown on the process. And I I would agree with the commissioners, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lori Oakley and I, there are Nancy's comments as well and I think you nailed it on the had Mr. Mercado that it just, it seems like you're taking away power and you guys are doing a great job. So I'd say just, just keep, let's just keep doing it, yes, other cities may have this, but I think what you're doing is working, so just leave a be.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we will close the public hearing, we will come back to the commissioners for final comments. Commissioner Reese.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I understand the police powers angle and how that could be an issue and that there may not be jurisdiction to act on a certain element of a project, but my hope would be that the elements that the planning commission does have jurisdiction over would be returned to them. And and because the whole kind of impetus for this ordinance amendment seems to lean on there being a a legal reason or a legal requirement for the additional review. I would hope that the inter, if it was a council member, for example, that requested the elevation of the project, that I understand that it's a norm that we say that council, city council, like attorney, city attorney and the city manager would be involved in, in evaluating that request. But I think that, you know, it's great for something to be a norm, it should be a requirement, in my opinion, to prevent potential abuse. But I do understand the need in very unique circumstances for something like this. I think that's all of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Romano Defazio.
Um, I, I think I've said quite a bit about my questions, but I would also echo my other two commissioners just concern the broad brush and the fact that the way of dealing with this, it either hasn't come up or we have a mechanism in place that appears to be able to deal with things and, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I think makes sense, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sarkia, final comments.
Oh, I went one hundred and eighty after hearing some of the comments that the commission has made. And, yeah, I worry about, excuse me, the division of power or take, making us just throwing this aside and the decision-making, but the way the city has worked in the, in the past, together, the commissions and the councils, I don't have a problem with this resolution in that point of view.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mercado.
Thank you, Chairman, I agree with our commissioners here. I understand the need for it, I just don't, at this time, I just think we have an appeals project position that we can go to. The very limited amount of eminent domain projects that we have here are very nil and none. I think it takes away, like I said, from the process of letting the general public come out and see a project as we see it from the first presentation to back to a review of where we've seen a project come back and they made some changes. It's worked, it has worked, send it back and and we keep working to get it mitigated to where we have a great project. I think when you take that away, you're doing a disservice to the city, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Uh, I also pretty much agree with what's been said. I believe that it mostly be, needs to be repeated. I believe in the current code as it stands and the process it allows. It allows the planning commission to be part of the checks and balances of our city. And that's what we've been talking about, the separation of power. I also believe the current appeals process is working, as a former city council person said, we've seen it in the past. This zoning ordinance amendment, I'll call it the Z O A, I believe undermines the fundamentals of our code. It also takes away one layer of the public review process. The example's been given, if it comes, doesn't come to us, the public doesn't get to talk about it either. The zoning ordinance amendment allows the city manager and city attorney, basic override authority to cut planning commission out of the loop. To cut planning commission out of the loop. I also believe this new zoning ordinance amendment takes away part of the appeals process. If you remu- if you remove planning commission and the city can, for example, if you remove planning commission and city council denies a project. The applicant's appeal process is taken away and basically forces a lawsuit. Um I am in disagreement with the broad brush brush approach to the language. Specifically, this matters of great significance. This matters quote. Matters of great citywide significance with no detail provided that it's. It's too broad. Um also, I think um there could be abuses of the situation. Because of or of this amendment to the ordinance, um because we are saying it would only apply to a unique situation. And it's not a standard practice, but there's really no, nothing to stop that from happening. So those are my comments. Um. I will ask someone to make a motion.
If they. I'll I'll jump in and make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so this will be my first time. I apologize if I don't word it properly, um but I will make a motion to. Deny resolution number twenty three oh seven of the planning commission uh city of Buellton recommending city council approval of an ordinance. Amending municipal code title nineteen zoning related relating to providing for certification of review. Of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for immediate city council consideration and making findings in support there uh.
Just to jump in real fast. If um if the motion is to deny.
Yes.
Um if that motion passes and will take the vote, um what I'll have to do is I will have to bring back. The resolution for denial at the next meeting with the appropriate findings. Um so I just wanted to point out that um you know, we can vote on, you know, the the recommendation and then again. If that is what ultimately the coun- or the planning commission decides, I will bring back a separate resolution with those findings. Just sorry.
Was did I get the rest of it?
With the motion on the table, can we discuss or? I I just, I guess what I want to say is that I could support a version of this. If it was more specific and more limiting because I there when there are elements that would be under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and elements that wouldn't be. I still think we should be able to look at the elements that would be. Um and I would support that.
Okay, maybe we can bring that back later if that's where we go. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the emotion stated.
So the motion to bring back a resolution for denial?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh roll call. Commissioner Defazio.
Uh I means no, correct?
Commissioner Reese.
Uh I abstain.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
Vice Chair, I mean Chair Hamel. I and that is an I again to uh. To uh.
To bring back a resolution for. Right, I don't wanna, I just wanna make sure it's clear, okay?
It is an I for denial.
Okay, so again, I will um at the next meeting um bring back that resolution with those findings.
Yeah, so that's a, I guess that's a three to. Well, no, it's a four one, a four to zero. Okay, okay, so you'll, we'll see you again.
Yes, and and again, yeah, the item that will be brought back is just to formalize it with the formal findings and then again, it's a recommendation to council, so that resolution. That that we know will be formalized at the next meeting will then be passed along as part of the consideration of the council, so.
But that would also include what our commissioner said, a finding, trying to find those findings to make it work, correct?
So if the, so well, so I guess let's clarify, so so if the. The vote was to bring back a resolution for denial, if you know, I guess. Um as Commissioner Reese mentioned, if things were more specific and more. Narrow or I don't know, I I wrote down what you said here, but um that you would be willing to support it, but at this point, the motion and. The vote was to bring back a resolution, excuse me, a resolution for denial, so. The resol- the findings that I um come up with, I could probably include some language that again would have to be. Ultimately, it's your your findings as the planning commission, so um I could draft up some language in those findings that speak to. Um it's a rec- it's a recommendation for denial and. And put some language in there that you guys can consider as a commission relating to Miss uh Commissioner Reese's comments. If that, so with that understanding, yes, that's what um I will bring back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who, let's take a minute. Okay, uh next public here, oh. She is recusing herself. I'll give you a second. Okay, uh next item, which is number three, right, three, which was two. Resolution number twenty three dash zero six, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Buellton, California. Recommending city council approval of a one-year time extension twenty three dash T E dash zero three. Request for tentative track map T T M three one zero six one located at the southern terminus of industrial way. Assessors parcel numbers zero nine nine six nine zero zero four eight and making findings. Findings in support there uh Planning Director Kiefer.
Yes, uh good evening Chair Hamel and members of the planning commission. This is the second request filed by the property owner for a one-year time extension for tentative tracked map thirty one zero six one. A copy of the approved tentative map is included in as attachment to in your packet. So T T M three one zero six one was originally approved by the city council on February uh twenty second twenty eighteen. And was originally processed concurrently with the final development plan for the B U E seventeen or the hub project. So um tentative track maps expire after three years per the Buellton municipal code. However, the code does allow the applicant to apply uh for up to three one-year time extensions for tentative track maps. The state also sometimes will provide um for statutory extend extensions for maps that are approved but unexpired. So um tentative track map three one oh six one was originally set to expire on February twenty second twenty twenty one. However, the legislator does provide for an automatic eighteen-month time extension um of certain designated projects. Um the applicant team has provided an interpretation of the applicability of this government code. Um in applying um this eighteen-month extension um to this particular entitlement and the city attorney has indicated a willingness to accept that interpretation. Um finding that it was a reasonable interpretation based upon the plain language read of the statute, so um. Therefore, the time extension was it set to expire originally with this eighteen-month time. Extension on August twenty second twenty twenty two. However, um last year, under the time extensions allowed under the Buellton municipal code, the applicant applied for the first one-year time extension. Um which was approved by the city council last year and remains valid through August twenty second twenty twenty three. Um so here we are tonight for consideration of the second one-year time extension for T T M thirty one zero six one. Under the provisions of the Buellton municipal code, and if approved, the time extension would be valid through August twenty second twenty twenty four. Um I will note that the application before the planning to tonight, planning commission tonight is for an extent time extension on uh T T M three one zero six one. The final development plan um is not a part of this application, um as the final development plan is valid through February twenty twenty four. So the planning commission upon good cause um shown may recommend approval to the city council for a time extension for one year. Uh staff feels that it is reasonable to recommend approval of the time extension request um. At this time, as the applicant has made a lot of progress um on processing the final map over the past year. Um the applicant is ac- actively working toward compliance with relevant conditions of approval. As part of the plan check process that they are currently undergoing with the city engineer on the map. So um with that, staff recommends adoption of resolution number twenty three zero six. Recommending approval of time extension twenty three T E oh three to the city council as written and depicted in the staff report. Um I'm available for any questions should the commission have any for me at this time. I do know that the applicant Gavin Moores is also. In attendance and I believe wishes to address the planning commission at some point, so. Um again, I'm available for any questions and I'll leave it at the discretion of the ch- the chair to um. Determine um whether they they'd like to hear from me first or the applicant.
Um uh Gavin, do you want to step up now or should we ask questions first? Okay, uh questions for Andrea. Commissioner Reese.
I was going to ask about the state extension, but you answered my question, so I don't have any further.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I'm good right now, thank you.
I don't either. Um I will let you come up and present and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Hamel, well, commissioners, I'd like to just, if you would mind. Thank you, Assistant. My name is, my name's Gavin Morse, I'm the agent project. And a couple of points I would bring up that I thought was very poignant that Andrea mentioned. Good findings, I think. Go to your presentation, yeah, and I think my purpose tonight is just to explain to you. Exactly what we've been doing since the last time we got an extension. Let me go to the second slide there.
Okay, let me share for a second. Here. Yeah, okay. Okay, there we go. So I'm just gonna. Okay, so we'll just have to do it this way. Okay, so the seconds.
So everybody knows the location, obviously we've spoken about this before. Um primary point to consider is obviously there's the primary access point at the south end of industrial way. I'll just say it, you know, explain that for relevance in the next slide, but let's just, we go to the next slide. So these are the items that we've been working on since we were here. We've gotten approved public improvement plan at the end of industrial way. That work is currently under construction at this moment. We're working on the bridge design, which we have submitted to. Um the city and we came back with comments that we need to address and and evaluate some standards in regards to the bridge specifications. So we've submitted mass grading plans to Tetra Tech, which is pending. I think we're on our final plan check now. And then obviously a zoning clearance after that, uh submission of the final map, that's what you have in your hand. And that map is actually an interesting exhibit because what it actually explains is. There's a key element of entitlements, which is substantial reliance and substantial reliance means that when a project is given entitlements. We are relying on those entitlements to both go forwards and move into significant investments on particular parts of a project. This is the final map that is in for review to the city surveyor's office. Um that right there is seventy five thousand dollars. I know it's not a lot, but when you just add all these items up. You want to rely on the entitlements that you are given to move forwards. That is. Not even a third of what we are spending on the rest of the project at this moment in time. But so that's the final map that's going through. Um we are working through our conditions of approval. And then we're very, very close to the four oh one, four oh four permits issuance. We had a. Collective joint call with all state and federal agencies on this uh this week, which was extremely productive, so I know that those are going to be issued any day. And then construction of the public improvements, that's underway right now down at the end of industrial way. We go to the next slide. That's just a picture of what was taken a couple of days ago, establishing the the road entrance into the site. That's part of go going forwards and getting the. Bridge process under undertaken. We need to have a water line extended, so we have water to the side as well, so we're going through that work. And then widening the apron and the access at the end of industrial way to come into the turn. Onto the street there will lead into the primary access for the project. So goes the next one, Andrea. This outlines the conditions of approval that we've gone through, the studies that we've undertaken and and progress that we've made thus far. Next, Andrea. So this was the preliminary map. This is what we based the tentative map off. And one of the reasons why we had an extensive amount of time in trying to figure this out is that we discovered in nineteen fifty three, a hub that was set by Caltrans was setting correctly. So it took but like months to try and figure this out and get with work with our surveyor, so we're very confident what we have right now. So that is just the first page of details, the map, which shows the easements, it shows the. The location of the parcels and then as you flip through, you can see all of the work has been undertaken to determine the exact. Location of the streets that is obviously in this um. In the details of the map. And also parking spaces, building paths, et cetera, and this is based off of obviously the B U E seventeen hub project. I'll hold it right there. I just want to give you a quick, simple update on um. What we've gone through and I I would just end it with this. I went back through the last twenty nine hearings that you've had at planning commission. Which generated two new projects. And ours is one of the only projects out of all the previous projects that you've granted approvals and extensions on, that is actually going forwards. And I think one of the reasons why it requires significant investment. There's four hundred thousand dollars basically plus online is that total that take just to get to two plans. So obviously, we appreciate your time and your consideration. I'll stay here if there's any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a does, do any of the commissioners have questions for Gavin, for the applicant?
Sort of. Yeah, um my question is, is the development plan also eligible for three more one-year?
So the development plan is on a slightly different trajectory in terms of extensions and timeframe, so development plans. Are valid for um initial five years and then they are able to be granted up to to one-year time extension, so that's why there's this. You know, difference in the, so anyway.
Understood, I just. Looking at what's here and some of the constraints, it it might take time to work through that process too, so that was why I was asking, but okay.
Okay, uh Commissioner Sarkia, questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Nope, nope, nope. Okay, we're in a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. We have one uh request to speak slip, so we'll start with Mr. John Dorwin.
John Dorwin, one oh four six flag circle. Resident since nineteen eighty eight. You all can't make a finding as to the environmental impact. Which states no changes have occurred with respect to the project. Or its environmental surroundings to require environmental review. These are in your um draft findings, paragraph C and D. Uh subparagraph A, I I I, page two of your findings. You can't make these findings due to the flood which occurred across the entire project. On January nine and we've provided you with photographs of the entire project being inundated by Zaka Creek. Coming out of its banks during the most recent uh event, which wasn't even a hundred-year uh storm. And uh we believe that this requires environmental review as a trigger. Event under SEQA. The purpose of SEQA exists to inform the public and the decision makers. As to alternative and mitigation measures not addressed in the current conditions and we believe the flood. Means that the city has to go back and review all of the thresholds for environmental review relating to. Zaka Creek flood control, the floodway and this uh proposed residential use. Adjacent to the Zaka Creek. adjacent to the Zaca Creek floodway. We, we've had some real tragedies here in the county, some of us remember nineteen sixty-nine when every bridge on the river was, uh, taken out and, uh, a lot of people were lost, not just because they were sucked into drainage facilities or they were drowned adjacent to drainage facilities. Quite a number of them perished trying to escape from one area to evacuate to another area, and we believe the flood of January nine requires environmental review. Um, if you have any questions regarding the, the photographs, I think everybody in our subdivision was down there and can authenticate what the situation was. Um, there's another issue here which I think is, is significant and wasn't addressed in the applicant's presentation. And that is the recording of the conditions. Uh, in the conditions in sections seventy-three and fourteen, there's a requirement that no work be done on the site until zoning clearance is obtained and the conditions of approval are recorded against the property. Why is this important? It's important in this case because the original people who got these conditions back in twenty-eighteen. They're not the project owners anymore, there's been a, a transition of ownership. In my understanding of California law is you need to have the new owners acknowledge and sign off and agree to the conditions. And no work is to be done until those conditions are recorded concurrently with the zoning clearance, so, uh, there, there's an issue here as to whether or not the conditions, the existing conditions of approval are binding on the new owner, because there's no recording and there's nothing we've seen in writing that says new owner agrees to any and all conditions as a term and condition of, of development. So we don't think at this point you've got an enforceable contract because you need to have something in writing and it needs to be recording, recorded saying we agree to the assignment of these conditions and we're bound by these conditions and, you know, that benefits both the city and the public, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the audience, uh, want to speak to this, a public hearing, public comments? Okay. With that, I will close that part of the public here, oh. Well, is it okay? You can ask a question, but we're not required to respond, I mean, if you, if you want to just make a comment or, okay. But come up and state your name.
Sure, Hansberger. I was just curious, now the easement is on, um, is it, it's not going to be anywhere near Rancho del Maria, is it, are you going to be going through that area?
Okay, so I have to stop you, it's not, this is a public hearing, it's not a Q and A with the applicant and it's not a Q and A with us. We just can take comments. Okay, thank you, um, you guys could always meet afterwards if you wanted to talk about that. Um, I will close the public hearing on that, uh, coming back to the commission, uh, final comments, Commissioner Reese.
I have a quick question, so with this final map, the conditions of approval, I imagine the, the act, the document that's recording the action of the commission and the council will be recorded as like a map information sheet or will somehow be recorded with the map?
So the, um, the condition of approval that's, that there was a couple, I think, referenced here, so there is a condition of approval in there that talks about recording prior to zoning clearance. Um, in speaking with, um, our city attorney and, um, city staff on this, this specific issue here, um, the language for that condition is, is you know, has been in, it's a standard condition of approval that's been in the books for a while. Um, certainly, um, the mechanism, we, and, and we have not typically, the conditions of approval have not actually been, we don't require that they are recorded at the county recorder's office. Um, we, I have been in discussions on what actually would make sense, um, in, in terms of recording something with the recorder to memorialize the conditions, but actually recording the conditions themselves. Um, you know, i- is not, you know, is not something that I think that we have required of other projects and it's something that we are taking a look at in, in the future in terms of what we'll actually require for projects, just because they're, you know, there's potential issues that could come up with that, but, um, but, um, I don't know, I can, I don't know if Rose can speak to, you know, when the map is actually recorded, I think the resolution of approval actually gets
Right, recorded with does get recorded as part of
So, as part of the map specific.
Correct.
And the entitlement runs with the land.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sarkia, final comments or questions?
None.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Um, just a brief comment, um, I know it's been approved uh, both by council and, uh, planning commission twice and once by the, uh, city council. Uh, I, staff has already, uh, seen fit to say that this, uh, process should be followed. Uh, so I, I think it's within reason that, um, we both, uh, guess on this, just because, uh, um, the state kind of tells you, it's okay to approve this as, as is and without, uh, having, uh, uh, them to provide any other negative comments on it, so I, I think, uh, giving their approval is, is not a big dish.
Would you like to turn that into a motion?
I will. I have to hear the last one. I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash oh-six as stated.
I second it, okay. I second. Roll call.
Vice Chair Mercado?
I.
Chair Hamel?
I.
Commissioner Reese?
I.
Commissioner Sarkia?
I do.
Order zero, motion passes. Okay, so that concludes our public hearings, if you guys want to stay or for a few more comments or you're welcome to go, but I asked you to collect your things and go out quietly and quickly so we can wrap it up.
Did you bring out three hole punch?
Okay, other business, I don't think there is any written communications, none. Planning commissioner comments, anything going on with anyone?
Good to go.
Okay, I'll report in that, uh, last night was the chamber mixer with Reeland Ford. Uh, catered by Cal Taco, it was awesome, the whole event was awesome, there were there are, I'm not going to go into it all, because there's a lot of stuff coming into the city and the area, August, September, October, a lot of events. Uh, so there were a lot of really lovely raffle prizes, uh, to tickets for events and all that kind of thing. Um, but anyway, a good time had by all and that's all I've got, so planning director reports.
And I really don't have, um, anything tonight other than what was, has already been discussed, so.
Okay, um, thank you very much, we will adjourn at seven-oh-nine.
Great job.